Whereas the Indiana Legislature proposed changes to the depreciation floor and other aspects of Indiana's business personal property tax as a priority in their 2022 legislative agenda, and whereas the Culver Town Council opposes all legislation that contemplates eliminating any portion of the personal property tax without permanent full replacement guaranteed by the state, and whereas any contemplated revenue replacement must be sourced from revenue that continues to grow over time, such as a property tax base, would in order to allow growing communities to meet demand for services, and whereas the permanent state tax credit applies to all proposed business personal property tax reductions, holidays, phase-outs, et cetera, to eliminate unnecessary burden on local government in order to continue building health Indiana communities, and whereas personal property tax is relied upon methods of funding of local government, and whereas for taxing units not at the cap, a reduction in the tax base could result in property owners paying more than residential property taxes. For those communities at the cap, any phase out of the business personal property tax means a loss in revenue for personal units of government, and whereas Tax Foundation 2022 State Business Tax Climate Index lists Indiana as number one ranking property tax, and whereas Indiana consistently ranks in the top states with an attractive business tax climate, yet the community's quality of life is an increasing greater influencer of business relocation and growth decisions, now therefore, we have resolved the Culver Town Council that we oppose all legislation that contemplates eliminating any portion of the business personal property tax without full and permanent replacement guaranteed by the state. This resolution shall become effective upon the date of passage, passed and adopted by the Town Council of the Town of Culver on the 7th day of February 2022.
I noted we approved the Resolution 2022-001 regarding the reduction in the business personal property tax.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Rich.
Second by Phil Ham.
That we approve Resolution 2022-001, the resolution of the Town of Culver opposing legislation regarding the personal business personal property tax. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
And you're going to have somebody forward that to the General Assembly as soon.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, Town Manager Report.
Okay. I'm going to go over the highlights of anything that's changed, and pretty much that takes us all the way to Peerless Proposal for the New Well. We do have the new survey from Territorial. They added a legal description as well as put this on the map, so I've sent that on to Jim. Once he reviews it, we will go to Wade with some sort of proposal for permanent easement. And Jim, if you want me to try to write that up off of the past easement, I can give a thought at it.
I can give that a whirl.
The alley survey, they're still working on that, and that's going to take some time because we need snow to melt, which I think is probably not a bad thing because it's going to take some time also for people to get their stuff out of the right of way there. So Bob is happy with the timing of that. BS Engineering Proposal, I just wanted to let you know that they got their work done for us on that, and Bob and I reviewed the preliminary design. I think I shared that with you guys at the last meeting. That particular project is one of the projects we submitted for Community Crossings Grant, and we submitted it separately from the other road segments in the event that the construction came in too high, or in the event that if they don't approve that particular road segment, it doesn't mean they won't approve the other road segments. So we just separated it out as two projects. Next is the proposal for the plant production meter testing. I don't know how you say that, if it's PTOT or HITOT, and also the meter. So this is two different proposals by the same company that I emailed you guys, E. Simpson and Company. So the first one would be the meter testing at a daily rate of 2,250. It's estimated to take no more than a day unless a problem occurs or we have to mitigate something. And if that can't be done on site, they will have an hourly rate apply at 275 per hour for a two-man team or 375 for a three-man team. And then the other one is for the combined photo sketch option inspecting clean screener. So there's among these two proposals, we need a motion to approve 850 for the PTOT test. That's what I'm calling it. Bob might have a different name for that. And then a 2,250 for the meter testing as well as the potential repairs or mitigation. And my thought was just authorize Bob to determine the need for repairs based on however that inspection goes.
The PTOT test is testing the meter at the water pump.
There a motion to, you want them individually?
You can do them together, I think, since it's a system.
Motion approved. Get out an session for the PTOT test and 2,250 per day rate for the meter testing.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Motion been made, and second to approve $850 for PTOT test and $2,250 daily rate for the meter testing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Skip over Park and go to Town Manager Updates. Talked to May Cog this morning. James is working on a proposal, and we'll have that ready before the next meeting. That's basically to help us with the work on comprehensive plan that we talked about the last. The CRC approval for appraisals and taking a look at that. We've got one of those in. The second one should come in tomorrow. He responded to me, Sally. So we will let the CRC take a look at that in potentially an executive session. Community Crossings Grant Application, as I emailed you last week, those got done on time for the application that night. The road segments that are going to be in that are Jefferson Street from State Road 17 to Slate Street. Now, I do want to explain something about that particular road. If you guys recall, the county by resolution gave us ownership of a part of that road from the corporate boundary to State Road 17. That paperwork was filed appropriately at the county, et cetera, but it never made its way to Endot because I don't think the people here knew to submit it to Endot, which means it's not in our inventory of road segments that we can get grant money from Community Crossings for. So at the last minute, the Endot person working with us, Marcia, who's fantastic about responding quickly, let me know that I had to take that little piece out of our Jefferson Street project, and then we also had to redo the cost estimate for from Slate Street to corporate limits. So then I had to put that segment in the grant. And since that's really Bob's number one priority of all these road segments, we went ahead and sort of did a last-minute change to get that piece in. We'll have to figure out how to pay from corporate limits to State Road 17, and we think we'll have enough left in our paving budget because our match on this grant isn't quite as much as we thought it would be. So just a heads up, that kind of came up at the last second.
Excuse me, Jenny. On that, are we resolving the issue with getting that section of roads registered with Endot?
Yes. Yep. I've already sent it off. And we thought the fact that we had documentation showing the county gave us that would be enough for Endot, but you have to update your inventory asset management plan every time you apply, and since it's not currently in that plan, next time around it obviously will be. So even if we did a fall application, we could potentially slip that segment in or just pay it out of our matching funds. The other streets are Baker Street from Wall Street to Lake Shore, and then Wall Street from Baker Street to Academy Road, then Pearl Street from State Street to Forest Place, Lewis Street from Plymouth Street to Lakeview, Slate Street from Madison Street to Mill Street, and South Street from Wabash to West Shore. And then, of course, that North Lake Shore Drive project that BS Engineering worked on is the other application. These are, these road segments, though, all went in one application. We don't have special event permits that are outstanding. You guys know this weekend is Winter Fest, though. We are still working on getting liability certifications from the businesses that'll have the ice sculptures on the sidewalks. So Julie Cowan and I have sent a message to Tony and Andrea Canacci to try to get those into us. We're already, I'm starting to get some via email. Apparently we require that since it is on the sidewalk, which is our right of way.
Did we get the excise issue resolved?
I believe so, yeah. And I'll confirm that with Wayne. This last time we talked, it seemed like that was going okay, but I don't know that he actually received it. Broadband Task Force, we met with a consultant. We also met with another provider, AT&amp;T, and had a good conversation with them. We're now going to meet again this Friday, and the consultant's going to join us, and that meeting is going to be about what our task force wants to put into the RFP, and he's going to help us with that RFP. We will loop Jim in along the way because the consultant advised that we want our attorney to look at everything we put together in the way of an RFP. And they also advised us to take a look at some RFPs that are out there. So I've been doing that research today, and I'll get that to our task force. Our process for that is to send out the RFP once you all have approved, and then once we get it back, we'll analyze the results of that, probably have public engagement, and then come back to council with recommendation because we want people to know what options are going to be out there in terms of what we get back. That's sort of the process we're looking at now, but we'll discuss that in more detail with the consultant this Friday. I just wanted to give you a heads up on.
The RFP is going to be for a...
Request for price for broadband fiber.
Within the town limits.
We've been discussing whether or not to do buried lines versus poles versus hybrid combo and other technical issues with that RFP that the consultant will help us work through. He was very excited to know. We've already talked to several providers to let them know, and it's drawn a lot of interest. We may have even one more that's coming on board. Chester, if you could mute yourself. Never mind, I've got it. So we'll keep you in the loop on that process. It may or may not change depending on the consultant's input, but he's been great to work with so far. The Crossroads Culver Team, I've been putting together a newsletter that will include some updates so that you guys can see what each subcommittee is, what their mission statement is, and that sort of information, and I plan to publish that more broadly. I've been working on a publisher document for that, so we'll get that out as soon as possible. I've kind of been talking to some of the subcommittee chairs, though, about what to put in for their sections, and thinking about making that a more general newsletter that could just have updates from all of us as well. So I may send you a draft of that before we put it out to like TGL and on the website and that sort of thing, so you can give your input and be my second set of proofreading eyes. It'd be really embarrassing if I had proofreading errors in that. Or if there's specific content you want to add to it, I think it'll be a good way also for us to communicate about broadband fiber when that starts up and when we want to get the word out. The Ready Grants, we have formed a committee at the Marshall County Crossroads level and at the local level. So those are going to, we're going to start working on those, and that's another different we should probably update people on in the newsletter. And Annexation of Tamara Road, we did meet with Mr. Richardson and Al Collins, and then we also met with Philip Pasanda, and I have the task continuing back to Burke Richardson on some things that Philip Pasanda requested information-wise. So I'm going to send Burke a memo and copy Jim and Philip Pasanda and Sally on that as CRC Chair and someone who's been in the loop on this. But I think that's, that project's going really well. And then that's it for that report. Other than, I need to let you know I will be out Friday with the exception of the broadband fiber meeting, taking part of the day to get ready for the dance. Embarrassingly enough, I need to do a little practice and also take care of some other appointments. So just a heads up, and also a heads up that Wayne will be out tomorrow and Thursday, so if you were expecting that, a visit with him. And I think that's it on Town Manager Report, Bill.
Directly related to broadband, but the data has...
Yes.
Progress on that?
I haven't heard back from RMC. They're supposed to arrange a visit for me and Bob to go see the artist's one, and they haven't.
Thank you. Department of Health Reports. Jeff, are you on?
I don't think we'll have Wayne or Bob. I haven't been hearing from Jeff, though.
This is just moving on. Fire?
I may have forgotten it was Monday.
Yeah, I got one thing. Last meeting, I went through you and gotten approval of ice and gears with a grant that we had for $5,000. Well, filling out the paperwork for the grant or looking into that grant, we don't fully have all the paperwork done on that grant. So what I need from you, I guess, is an approval for me to go ahead with the paperwork to finish up on that grant, so that when we go to get this gear, we have that paperwork filled out. We filled out one set of forms, and I didn't realize there was that, and then another set of forms, which I have that they resubmitted because this grant came last year. Now we're in 2022, so the paperwork changed just a little bit. So I guess what I need is approval to finish filling out the paperwork with the grant and Jenny's help to get this thing back on track.
I make a motion that we authorize Terry to proceed with the grant. Second.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevinger, second by Rich to authorize Terry to give Jenny and fill out the grant request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
And that's all I have.
Park?
I just have those two quotes for the basketball court renovation project that I'd sent out to you guys via email. I had shown you guys some blueprints. I have them here if anyone's still interested in taking a look at them. It's just the court surface with sport court tiles with the inclusion of lines for pickleball and then the installation of a pickleball net. So the first one I have is from Versa Court, and the total for that project is $34,131.08. And then the other one that I have is from Commercial Recreation Group for $36,693.52. And then, as you know, $10,000 of this project is being covered by the grant that we got from the Marshall County Community Foundation, and the rest will come from what we had budgeted. We had originally budgeted in that line item $30,000, but obviously we won't need all that with the assistance of the grant.
Do you have a preference over the two?
Yes. So my suggestion would be to go with Versa Court. One, it came in lower, but then also, just like with my experience with them, a lot more responsive, just in terms of deadlines and stuff. And then also, they do a lot of more commercial grade courts, whereas CRG is more private projects and homes and stuff. So Versa Court does a lot more. They have a lot of experience out in Chicago, so my suggestion would be Versa Court.
There a motion to approve the Versa Court quote for $34,131.08?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Phil Ham, and second by Sally to approve the Versa Court bid of $34,131.08 for the basketball. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.
Other than that, we had a pretty good turnout at our snow day that we had in January, like give or take about 72 people. So that was a really good time. We're going to do another one in February, but it'll be just an I am an artist event, so it'll be a little bit smaller numbers. But yeah, other than that, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Bob, are you online for utilities?
You can't tell that his number is on there. There's someone on that.
Let's move on to clerk's report.
Yes, I had that Karen. First, she wanted to check to see if you guys would be good with a work session for that Board of Finance report that she canceled from tonight for 5:45 at the next meeting. Does that work for you guys?
Twenty-second.
Yeah. And then I was going to request at the March 8th meeting, an executive session to meet with Mr. Crown for a presentation, if that works for everyone. And I'm thinking we'd probably need to do that one like five or 5:30.
What day was that?
March 8th. Great. Yeah, thank you for making it.
Should that also include CRC?
Probably not at this time.
Okay.
Does that work for you guys?
Is everybody okay on 22nd at 5:45, and then again on March 8th at 5:30?
Okay.
Sounds good.
I'll let Karen know so we can get the advertisements out.
Okay. I noticed in Buzz's response, is he going to be here or is he going to be virtual?
He's probably going to be here.
Good. I think he should be here to meet everybody. I would recommend that.
I agree. Supposed to have to be here to defend myself.
That's right.
Yes.
He's got more pictures.
And then Karen has claims in excess of $2,000. She wanted you to know that the Stricker Sales Corporation, that's an annual amount that we do for EMS for the AED payment. Everything else is pretty self-explanatory. We're in the claims.
There a motion to approve the claims over $2,000?
I just said it was Stricker.
Oh, Stricker?
So moved.
Motion made by Rich. Is there a second? Second by Sally to approve claims for $2,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Karen also wanted you to know that Bill filled out a conflict of interest statement, and I found I brought a copy of it. Bill, I'm assuming it's because you sit on the Board of the Library?
Board of the Library.
For the community organization.
Board of Culver Youth and Treasurer of Westlake, that's the church.
Also, she wanted to let you know, if you didn't attend it, about the meeting with Todd Samuelson that we had at the County Commissioner's Office. You'll have a packet that I brought back for each of you, which was his presentation. It's pretty much equivalent to what you heard from Jeff Rowe at our last meeting. Annual report is due to the State Board of Accounts on March 8th. She, if you guys recall, I think last year Phil Clevinger reviewed the annual report. Karen likes to have at least one of you do the review so that she has an internal control in place, and she wondered if one of you would be willing to do it this year.
I'll do it, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
And then she wanted you to know that W2s were sent out to the employees, W3 and WH3 filed with the IRS and Department of Revenue. 1099s have been distributed and sent to IRS. The 100R reports submitted to State Board of Accounts. These are all upcoming, some of these are upcoming reports, including video franchise reports submitted to IURC, debt management reports submitted on date, and to be done before end of February, she has to submit the annual financial report as well as cancel any outstanding checks. So I believe I got all of the terms, so.
Very good. Attorney's Report.
President, I don't have anything to present tonight.
Are there anyone present or online for utility shut-off or order?
I'll let Karen know so we can get the advertisements out.
Okay. I noticed in Buzz's response, is he going to be here or is he going to be virtual?
He's probably going to be here.
Good. I think he should be here to meet everybody. I would recommend that.
I agree. Supposed to have to be here to defend myself.
That's right.
Yes.
He's got more pictures.
And then Karen has claims in excess of 2,000. She wanted you to know that the Stricker Sales Corporation, that's an annual amount that we do for EMS for the AED payment. Everything else is pretty self-explanatory in the claims.
There are motion to approve the claims over 2,000?
I just said it was Stricker.
Oh, Stricker?
So moved.
Motion made by Rich, is there a second? Second by Sally to approve claims over 2,000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Karen also wanted you to know that Bill filled out a conflict of interest statement and I found a copy of it. Bill, I'm assuming it's because you sit on the Board of the Library.
Board of Library.
Culture Youth Organization.
Board of Silver Youth and Treasurer of Westlake, that's the church.
Also, she wanted to let you know, if you didn't attend it, about the meeting with Todd Samuelson that we had at the County Commissioner's Office. You'll have a packet that I brought back for each of you, which was his presentation. It's pretty much equivalent to what you heard from Jeff Rowe at our last meeting. Annual report is due to the State Board of Accounts on March 8th. She, if you guys recall, I think last year Phil Clevinger reviewed the annual report. Karen likes to have at least one of you do the review so that she has an internal control in place. And she wondered if one of you would be willing to do it this year.
I'll do it, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
And then she wanted you to know that W2s were sent out to the employees, W3 and WH3 filed with the IRS and Department of Revenue. 1099s have been distributed and sent to IRS, the 100R reports submitted to State Board of Accounts. These are all upcoming, some of these are upcoming reports, including video franchise reports submitted to IURC, debt management reports submitted on dates and to be done before end of February, she has to submit the annual financial report as well as cancel any outstanding checks. So I believe I got all of the plans, so.
Very good. Attorney's report.
President, I don't have anything to present tonight.
Is there anyone present or online for utility shut-off ordinance violation? Karen, you're seeing none. Let's move on to citizen input. Is there anyone in the room on citizen input? Is there anyone online for citizen input? If so, state your name and address and speak. Very good. There are none. Move on to council issues.
Chris? I just want to thank and acknowledge the work that Bob and his crew did over the trying times last week. Wednesday through Friday, they did a great job of getting the streets cleared and keeping them safe. Passage of emergency vehicles and other vehicles. And so I just want to express our appreciation to them for the work they did.
Very good. William? Let me ask Sally a quick question and then maybe some for Karen. If that second quote comes in, should we have an executive session before the?
Yes, that if we get a second quote, you know, prior to meeting.
Yeah, should we set a little schedule and ask her to schedule an executive session for?
Yeah, Sally, I thought we'd give Karen a heads up to advertise for when it comes in.
That's all I have, Bill.
The great thing is it's not till the 22nd, so we.
Yeah, we've got till the 21st, I mean, it's on the 21st. Hopefully it arrives, you know, enough time to advertise prior to CRC meeting, executive session.
This is the 15th.
It's not technically the 3rd.
Is it the 15th or the 22nd?
It should be the 21st.
Should be the 21st, I think.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, the 21st, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right. Sally, do you have anything?
I don't.
Nope. Yeah, there's, I'm not sure what the policy is on the new sidewalk on I-10, but I'm getting some complaints from citizens saying it's not clear. It's snow and I know it just snowed. So I don't know what we are planning to do about that.
We usually do take out, we.
Because it's brand new, so I don't know if there's a procedure yet.
Yeah, they should be shovel, not shoveling it, but they have a smaller machine that they usually do the trails with, so I was.
People that wanted to go out to the restaurants for, you can hear from.
Yeah, I don't know why they didn't because I know.
On 10?
Yeah.
It's cleared.
It wasn't three days ago.
Oh, yeah, it's clear. Yeah, Bob was out there like two, I literally saw Bob out there and it's.
Oh, he was a man.
Yeah, it's been cleared since, like I walked out.
That's why I'm wondering because.
He made one pass.
I tried to get him in here for me, but he was out doing trails.
He made a pass on South Main and it's, you know, we got probably an inch of, inch and a half of snow after that. And they plowed, so there's debris, snow, ice, whatever. And I suspect that's what's up on State Route 10 is the state plowed again.
Yeah, yeah, probably gets pushed back on.
The state plowed it after we did it, but that wouldn't make sense because they do their roads later than us. I'll look at it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I have nothing. Bill?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just like want to acknowledge that Bob Porter and his crew cleaning the streets, it's just did a great job. In my estimation.
You did? Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion is made to say return. All of them, if ever say aye.
Aye.
That might be my shortest notes ever for me.
Jenny, did you want me to follow through with, you guys have miller's?
Karen's.
Miller's bill is.
Yeah.
I have to worry about.
I'll call them.
Oh, yeah.
Prepare.
And Karen did not receive a copy of it, so it's. I put it in the page.
Oh, you do? Yours is way too nice. Yeah.
Took out the garbage, thank you. I'd want to shovel the drive. Friday, I said, let's just get this out of the street.